I can, if you want to make copies of my list, I have them written on here.
No.
Or, and I tell you what, we actually did another budget estimate.
So I'm not understanding why these weren't done when you were handed the budget?
Why, what wasn't done?
Why the budget that you handed in is not what you wanted, and why we're doing all these changes now?
Because things changed. You guys saw the light, and dispatch, and EMS, and everybody else.
I remember sitting at that meeting, and I asked the question. When we give all of these 911 directors and all the 911 more money, I said, how many of you police officers sitting out there are gonna come and want more, more, more? What was that answer?
We would've raised our hand, absolutely.
No, not one.
Your exact words, Tracy, we're gonna have to do this for all first responders. And I said, absolutely.
I remember the police saying, we understand why you're having to do this.
No, no, no. We said we weren't gonna be mad over it than getting it.
So, 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 I, I think we need to go through these lines, so that we can get accurate numbers.
Do you have something you'd like me to copy for them? I'd be glad to go copy.
Yeah, I think that's...
So we've got the, we've got the deputy's number at 770-766.
Right.
What other changes to what's in front of us do you have?
So the reserve line, and she has to, the reserves, we can't get people to do this being paid, let alone do it for free. So I've cut that in half, 2375.
Okay.
Okay. In the reserves?
Yes.
Which number?
The reserve deputies. 1,6, 1,001,6.
You don't have 2375? We have half the reserves you used to have, is that what you're saying?
We don't even have half. Right now, we have three. That first number, the 47, is for 10.
Okay.
But we have three at this very moment. So, there's, nobody's getting, we're not gonna be able to find an additional...
This is the one in many coming out of...
This is what?
So...
I think this will be the one in many. I mean, if we go through and start changing all these, then we'll probably have to change many more.
Well, let's just go, I mean, we're just, we're on the sheriff's budget, so that's where we need to stay, right?
Well, she took my sheet.
Oh, okay. Do you know if the legal deputies still, 6,000?
No, that was taken away.
That's a zero.
Did we buy cars out of the shares?
It was taken away for this year's budget, yeah.
So no legal debt?
You know, I put, I asked for it again, I'm just saying, yes.
Are you asking for it now?
Correct, in the out, right?
Zero.
No, I'm asking for six.
Okay, put 6,000 down for the legal deputy, that's...
It's already there.
No, 'cause that comes out of...
That comes out of the sheriff's...
Perpetuation. Commissary, yeah, thank you. Commissary.
So there's a 6,000 staying or going? Right now, it's staying.
It's a request, but what we're saying is, we take that out of commissary generally.
So how many cars is up this year?
I just put in for three.
So three cars is 200 and almost 10,000 now?
Absolutely. All the documentation, you should have all that documentation.
Yeah, I have read it. Is this all what's up?
Yeah, you guys gave, I think you gave Tobe 115 for this year? We can't, we didn't have enough here. We got two cars.
That came from the commissioners, not in jail. Came out of Kim Catt.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are the cars coming from?
So there's a...
Didn't you get the pickup, dump truck pickup truck out last year?
Um, not this, not this year, no. No, I think that's last year or the year before.
I swore it was this year. The pickup that jumped by the cellar?
I, I mean, it was reason, but not logic here. That was before. It's this time.
This is what the sheriff's doing.
Now you're breaking stuff.
Well...
You need to look at that.
So are we still going down one by one, or are we just...
No, we don't need to now, we got, it's fine.
Here, I'll give you mine. Then you can start, go up there.
So the reserves are going down to 2375. The next change you have is an overtime, 10,000, which is going up.
Purely my fault.
What's purely your fault?
That's not, that was at zero.
But it should be at what?
It was at six last year, but 10 this year.
10.
I asked for 10.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
When we only have one guy on duty, 'cause somebody takes the day off, and 6,000 equates to, if you just divide it out by 12 guys who are getting paid, that's $500 a guy, I can't even cover a shit for 6,000.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Uh, the next one that is changing is the radio equipment contract. That is a, for a contract with Lexipol, our, our SOPs are 10 years old, and...
Can you, we're writing from the acronyms, I'm sorry.
Standard operating procedures, our, our policies are 10 years old from back in the Tony Burns era. And it's gonna, it's gonna cost us $5,425.
To do what?
To get those updated.
Updated policies.
So that's what that addition is. The investigation center, that, that is...
I'm sorry, but that's in the radio equipment contract.
When I, when I spoke with my matron, she said, she put the, they were contracts, she uses that for contract stuff.
Yeah, that's, I'll, that's fine, I'll just note it, but that's, I mean, yeah, it's probably not that.
And that is all for that month.
What, with the investigation centers?
Oh, I'm sorry, 1,200. It, it, the lease is up now, and the renewal is an extra $100 a month. So, from 600 to 700.
Did you sign that for a three-year lease again?
Uh, I went to the commissioners the other day, and it's an automatic renewal. I don't think they signed anything. But I went to their last meeting. Yeah, I don't, two years. I thought it was three, too, but it, it was two years. And I think we can get out of that if the new facility opens up. We can move it out there.
You mean jail?
Yes.
How much longer are we gonna need that facility? Is that indefinite, or...
Yeah, there's, there's still, kind of when we talked about it, we, they're still using it daily.
Okay.
Now, I still have a resolution on it, now, at an end, I honestly, I don't know. I assume after a trial.
Next page.
Okay. Uh, so we can move to, any, any other questions on the sheriff's budget?
So these are all ups, there was no downs, correct?
Yeah, no, the reserve was a down.
Oh, okay. I, I, is that on? Oh, it isn't. 2375, got it. 2375, got it.
All right, let's jump to the jail budget. Page 22.
So again, I changed those numbers, the salaries, to reflect 10,000 across the board. And I just wanna throw at you, again, like a jail, the jail commander physician, Cass County's will be making 61.7, Clinton is 61.80, Howard is 60,000, White County's gonna be 60,000, Tipton's 80,000. Just another example of how far behind we've come, we've gotten. The meals for prisoners, so, I think you see a, I think she handed out, I think it's all on Josh's desk, there's a Kelbo. That's who we currently use, and they just doubled. So I turned around, Lori and I, found other contracts, we had other pe, other vendors come in, and I can change that to 163 instead of 203.
So, but that's still 50,000 up year over year?
Yeah, it's up, yeah. The, and the, it was 225 a tray, this other company went to four and a quarter. And this new company, we've got them, if we provide inmate workers, trustees to help them, they get it down, back down to three something. If we don't do that, their cost is 625 a tray. Yeah, it is.
So is, is going back to doing our own food an option?
You can't, we can't find any help. At least when the vendors have it, it's upon them, and they send people from other places when they're not there, and...
We, uh, I mean, we spent more to go to 111 than we did when we did it ourselves. And now we're increasing from there 50%. So, I, yeah, I don't know.
And that's the cost of food that's went up, and the cost of them trying to get employees to come also. That's exactly what that is.
How many people are they sending? How many employees does it take?
I mean, it's...
You're gonna look at their day, you have to pay more employees more, or we're gonna...
Oh, one. I think they're only sending one.
They're sending one.
Yes.
And we can't even find one to do it, maybe, huh?
Not for seven days a week, three times a day. And, and again, not at a, probably a low salary.
Right.
You can't do it.
This furniture, computers, printers, line?
Yes, that is, so we don't have anybody that works on our computers, or any of our network, or anything like that. Like, the guy, I don't even know the guy's name, that comes to the courthouse and takes care of that stuff. Well, I think you'll hear later from Brad about how poorable the network is, and it's, if it crashes, well, Sound Advice has sent us a, I don't see, this is one of those, I just think you have, a potential contract for...
I don't think we have it.
Yeah, I think we have. 13, 1345 a month for the sheriff's office, to take care of all of our electronic equipment, networking, servers. 15 workstations for, for the sheriff's office.
So that cost is 26140?
No, that's six, that's the 16 that I wrote above, that's what's...
16140, 1345 a month, I mean, well...
Okay.
So that's 1,60140, not 26140?
No, no, no.
16,140.
That was the addition. It's 26.
26140, not 16?
Yes.
26106, or what's that say?
140.
So, is that per year, or is that at one time?
Per month. Well, it's 1345 a month for the sheriff's office.
$1,345.
Correct.
So, but that's forever?
Yeah.
So this is...
Any other questions on the jail budget?
And then the out of county, I don't know if we saw that. We have, I've tried to cut back on as much out of county as what we've been doing.
What about the medical dental doctor?
Yes, so, if I understood things correct, Tobe always budgeted just what QCC, the, the medical company, the vendor, sends us a, this is what we anticipate here. Well, he budgeted that. Well, that doesn't cover when they go to the dentist, when they go to the hospital. That was the 20,000 I had to come up and transfer with, for the medical, because that's just the QCC services, is what he's budgeted for. Everything up, we've got a guy, we just got furloughed, because we sat with him for three, four days, he's a Methodist. And two weeks before that, he was in Methodist. I mean, it, out of my control, we, we have to default to what the doctors say. But that's why it's higher, because it wasn't taking into account any of the actual other medical things that were going on.
Okay.
And that, and just for the record, that 50 some odd thousand that was being budgeted for prior, that gets us a nurse for six hours a week. I mean, they help, they, they help reduce our costs. They come in, you know, that's all I'm called doctors, that's a doctor coming, some mental health. But that gets us someone on site for six whole hours.
Okay, um, let's jump to courthouse security. This is 5A, so it should be right behind the sheriff's budget.
Is this, do you have an amendment to that in your, in this document?
No.
Yes.
So I, I will say on this, and Tony can elaborate, there is a committee that's been working on this for quite some time. This is the recommendation that, um, I believe has come before the commissioners, and that the committee has recommended, so this is all net new, but, um, it's just in an effort to get our courthouse security, uh, launched and to a measure where we feel like is appropriate for the county.
I don't see an equipment line on there.
Well, equipment as far as like the uniform and leather goods and stuff like that.
Equipment, like when they walk in the door and scan your equipment and that, or are we just gonna have people standing there?
We're hoping for grants for them. 'Cause that stuff's expensive.
Animal control?
Any questions on the courthouse security? All right, let's move to animal control, page 25.
Animal control is quite a touchy subject with the public. People love it, people want it more. But the bottom line is, we have nowhere to take them. That's the bottom line, the ARPA meeting, um, I'm, I'm gonna submit something to try and build a three-run kennel for like $12,000, maybe temporarily, put it out at the transfer station, and let the animal control guy take care of it. And then, when the jail's done, we can move it over, and I'll have inmates take care of any of the dogs. But, but right now, I don't wanna say, we're not wasting money, but we're not responding to a lot of calls, because there's nowhere to take them. And I don't know how many are on Facebook, I can't stay on Facebook, but, you know, there's dog, there's dogs posted on there all the time. And I would love to help a lot of these dogs. However, we've got nowhere to take them. So...
So, so that being the case, like, just, just fundamentally, how is this person spending their time, then? Like, how are they...
They're purely call out. Call out only. They're, they're not on the clock.
So, I mean, why are they going out if they pick up a dog, there's nowhere to take them? What is he doing?
So a lot of the times, if we have a dog on a traffic stop or something, and somebody's going to jail, or something like that, I, I believe he's taking those dogs to his house, and wait, or waiting for a family member to come and get them, and things like that. But, that's out of the graciousness of his heart. 'Cause there's nowhere, we, we have taken some to, um, dealt by vet, but they're usually full. There's, there's nowhere. I've, I've contacted all the surrounding counties, everybody, you know, like Tiptonew County, Lafayette, they are, they have bought spots in their local animal shelters, so they're constantly full, too.
But isn't it true that the Delphi veterinarian won't take them, because she doesn't have a stall for them to keep them by themselves?
She does have one, but if it's full, they're, because she wants to keep them solitary, in case they have any diseases, away from any of the other dogs that are in there. So if that's open, she will take them, but that's only happened a couple of times.
But I thought she gave them shots and stuff like that?
And it added to the profit, the price, yes.
It's very expensive.
This has to be...
Yes. And, and generally, if someone would come and pick that dog up, that animal up, that, that cost would fall onto them, so...
I'd like to say for just a moment, I did this for, I'm in there, and I did this for five to eight years. My contract was I keep these dogs for three days, and I put it down. And the county bought an incinerator to take care of them, which was, 20 years ago, was $15,000 or something. Talking that, but you get a nice dog in, and I, I kept a lot of dogs for three weeks before, and didn't find a home and had to put them to sleep. I got parvovirus in my whole clinic twice from it, and this is why most veterinarians want to do it. And getting paid for three days to keep them for three weeks, I lost 900, thousands of dollars, you know?
And that, and that's where, and that's where we're at.
That's where everybody is.
Housing is the, is the big problem, and, and I feel bad that we can't go out and pick up a lot of these dogs that truly do, but we've got nowhere to take them. And, and that kinda reflects in the fact that it's, we've not used much of that budget even this year, you guys.
Okay. Any other questions on animal control? Any thoughts or questions on the donation funds? Okay. Anything else for the sheriff?
Tony, I, I, you know, I appreciate you trying to figure out things, and I, and I appreciate you putting it all out here, so that we can kinda see this holistically. But, um, the, my math, I see $800,000 in new spending on this, on the shoots that I just went through here. That does not count the 100,000 in reduction in that jail thing, but we've done that before, and one year we cut it from like 200 to 100, and then we just get $100,000 of additional, because, like, what are we gonna do? You know, I mean, if, if they are out of, out of county, we end up paying for it anyway, so it's kinda hard for us to say that that's a true savings. But, all, with, even considering that 100,000, that's still, I, by my math, 700,000 in new spending. On a $9 million budget last year, um, just for this one part of it. So, like, you've gotta prioritize, I mean, from your perspective, um, what, what's the, what's the priority here?
So, and again, it's just a reality. If, if my, Tiptonew County, I called them today, asked them how many jailers they were short. They're short 15 down there. And if my jailers, this is the River Mill over there, they don't necessarily come to the sheriff's. If they aren't gonna get the money, if they aren't gonna get money here, they're just gonna go somewhere else. And what that leads to is, then we're gonna have nobody on the road, because I'm gonna have to pull the road guys in, which is only two of them anyway. The jailers work by themselves as it is. It, it's a big hazard for them, on top of everything else. If I had a priority, it's, it's taking care of the, it's being loyal to the people that are loyal to all of us. It's, it's the salaries, and, and to shore up, that, that they're wanted, they're needed, we appreciate them. 'Cause you can only say it so many times before it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how anybody could draw the conclusion that the council hasn't been for law enforcement over the last...
I'm, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying we're so far behind, and it's a competitive, the, the world is competitive now.
Yeah.
With inflation and everything else.
The thing that I'm struggling with is, we did, we've done double-digit pay raises for the sheriff's department, we've done...
And they're still behind. I get it.
Well, I, but, yeah, and I, I mean, I guess maybe the verbiage bothers me, because, I mean, we, we say, you gotta get here because you're behind, and then we get to there, and then, then, then the next year is, you gotta get here because you're behind.
Well, and it, and it is, but you've never caught it up. And, and here's the thing...
But we did exactly what was asked, exactly to the letter.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, and that's why I'm asking, you can't, you can't say no or yes if I don't ask.
Right.
So I have to ask. But if, to answer your question, priority is keeping the people that I have. It is top priority. I have to feed them. I, you know, I can look into seeing how much it costs to try and find a couple cooks and people to come in and, and do it ourselves, but it's, it's not been work, it didn't work. And it's just so much easier to know that this, if, if I go to a different company, then, well, I have to, $40,000 cheaper, I have to go to this other company. But I, I can't, I can't risk them not being fed. I, I'm not a good cook. I mean, I'd have to run, I'd have to run a McDonald's if the person didn't show up to do breakfast.
Almost cheaper to go to McDonald's than buying a box of...
Really, nine, 10 bucks?
Yeah, it's not a risk. Okay.
But again, that, that is 1,000% my priority, and it's, and it's not so much, it is a loyalty to those people. But it's also, because, again, we're building a jail, we're not gonna go hire, I can't hire people now. We have five total.
So when does the jail become operational?
Uh, they said, what'd they say, 14 to 18 months, no, 18 to 24 months after they broke ground.
So, five.
Well, they, and, and I don't know that they'd ever wanna say this, but they told me their last jail was bigger than built in 14.
But that would put us operational in 24.
Correct.
And this budget does not reflect that, I assume?
Yes. The meals, the, the stuff like that, initially?
It doesn't. It doesn't reflect the amount of staff that you retain? And have you done that analysis yet?
No, my understanding is, I'm, I'm told there'll be a study that will tell us what that staffing ratio should be. And, and that's the bad thing now, the jail inspector's coming this month, and he's gonna ding us on, we're, we're not at staffing levels. Even, if, if I was full staff in the jail, it's not, it's not enough. We get dinged every year.
But with the new jail also, like, will we, will we turn the other jail, are you putting in the, the procedures in that where it's gonna cost them to do things substantially? Such as the package program, they wanna get in a package, it costs them 10 bucks a time.
That is, that is definitely on the...
So that is there, 'cause I've noticed, like, with your commissary, you really tighten that up, and it looks a lot better, so I'm sure that...
Yeah, that is definitely...
Every little thing like that.
I'm taking baby steps, but I'm, I'm trying to get things ironed out.
Because once again, I'll say, how do you expect us to, where's this money gonna come from?
I understand. And that's where I was trying to come up with that other 219.
So really, you'd come up with 700,000?
All right. I, I'm not questioning your numbers, that's, that even seems high to me.
Just, just, just the one department, new department is $200,000.
Oh, yeah, including, including the security, for our security.
Right, I'm just saying what's in this package.
I bring what I, I, I bring what the committee asked.
Yeah, we've got to go forward, so...
Yeah. All right. But I'm happy, call me anytime, seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
You ready for me?
Yes.
Come on. I'm gonna catch you up a few minutes.
It's good to see you after fair with no casts.
No casts. Had an awesome fair, wonderful volunteers, including Miss Beth, great people that came to the fair, it was, it was good. So I just came to say thank you for all you do. I do not envy your job, I'm glad it's not me. And because I've been doing this so many years... So, I just came to say thank you for all you do, I do not envy your job, I'm glad it's not me, and because I've been doing this so many years, you should know, I only spend, like, with my own budget, what I need, I have asked for everything exactly the way it's been, because that's the way it's been running. So, if you look at the extension, the increases in the same salary stuff you've been talking about, so Purdue's, uh, cast is four percent, I put in seven percent per county, I know you'll do whatever you can.
Purdue's getting what, and what is the county's part, Purdue? To have Purdue extension in the county, it's four percent.